So, this is all vaccinated through Dr. Producer's kid, his wife donated all that. But it's something like a zebra or something that they had to operate and we have to take the effort for vaccinations and stuff.
And then what happens to Rico when his work time is over?
Well, I don't know, except you guys.
He stays with Rick, right?
I would want him at my house.
You're going to have him like a Malburn's cat?
Yeah.
Okay, any more questions for Rico and the dogs and family and our guests?
Thanks for showing up.
Okay, moving on. All right, I have to cut all the tabs, but you guys.
My correspondence first, they gotta follow me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They gotta follow me before I do.
Don't have me, go ahead.
Well, yeah, so I don't have anybody to bite anybody, but just a couple of good things was Chris Rodman just got his grade one water treatment and water distribution, so that was one of the things we were asking him to get when we hired him, so he's well on his way, he's got his wastewater now before his time's up for his probation.
Water treatment and water district. And what's that for?
Basically, I would like everybody in public works to have it, just to get the general knowledge of what we actually do and the public safety factor of it.
Okay.
We're a grade two for water and a grade three for wastewater. This way, it also helps out for when I'm gone, he understands the basics, and now Rico wants that part of doing some of the stuff that I need to do. Ultimately, it's still my license and I'm the one responsible, but he is now able to do a little more than what we would.
Would it be a goal to train him up as high as you are or no?
Yeah, that's what we're looking at. The grade three's a bit tougher, and I don't know if he's wanting to do that. The two's definitely, especially on water, because if there's a water main break and I'm not around, another operator, I mean, so. With that being said, the weather's supposed to be staying warm for the next few days, as long as the streets stay wet, we're gonna try to get the sweeper out, pick up some of the sand we've been dumping on the road, we got a couple spots with quite good sand just because of the weather we had, trying to keep trashing out there. We won't add water, so if it's dry and it's creating a dust storm, we're not gonna do that, if we have the water, we take a chance of not getting any winter out if we're breaking out, so. Sure y'all heard, we had a water main incident, which actually wasn't a water main incident, we had four service lines, that connection to the water main actually rusted and broke, so the main was intact, it was actually the service connections to...
You said south?
Yep, to the individual residents that went back. So, when we have new developments, I know there's always been a question on why we gotta have engineering staff and the city staff there inspecting it, this is one of the reasons why.
Did they use the wrong equipment or something?
It wasn't the wrong equipment, but it also wasn't the best equipment for you. It was probably towards the cheaper end at the time it was installed. It's not even allowed in the town now since I've been here. So, we also take different steps now too with the knowledge and the education we've got from the past and stuff failing, so.
So, when those saddles come off of the main, is that ours or is that...
Yeah, that's part of the, when the city took back from the airbox to the main five years ago or... When they took that back, this was part of the reason why is that council didn't feel as fair for the residents to be responsible for this street, and that's, you know, I don't know if you guys have been down there, we've got a three or four hole in the street. We fixed three, thought we were good, and shut the hydrant off after flushing it, and before he could get one of them wrapped, the hole filled up with water from the other one, we had to find it, so.
Where was it, Sam?
South Street, at the cul-de-sac there.
By Loveback's old house?
Water's blinks, yeah.
So, with that being said, this spring, as long as we can make it to this spring, we're gonna take our back card over there and pothole the existing services we haven't replaced, verify if they were wrapped, and if they weren't wrapped, what kind of shape they're in, and if we deem they need to be fixed, it's a lot easier to do it.
So, those were not properties that were taken care of in the water main project that we had over there a few years ago, right?
No, we just, we made the connection at Alexander.
Okay.
That's where we did it, so, it went down that way, which came out because we could actually throttle it down and make it a decent working area.
That it?
Yep, that's it, it's not.
Okay, Connie, or no, well, yeah, Connie.
Ricky's already got his, so. Dave only had one thing to report tonight, so I told him I would take care of that for him if he could spend some time with his family tonight. He did get, wanted to update you guys on the sewer rehab project that, when we got the grants and everything for, so currently, right now, they're doing an environmental review, that has to be done before they can release the funds to us, and also, we had to do a, what do they call it, a tribal notice, we had to send notice to four or five different tribes that are in this area for some reason, some of the letters I sent went to Oklahoma, they have thirty days to respond or to comment on our project that we're doing, and we have about, we're just about close to the end of that thirty days, we haven't heard anything yet, so hopefully we'll be okay on that, and then, we also have to have a seven-day local comment period, which will start, so the hoops you have to jump through to get this five hundred thousand are amazing, but we'll take it. So, we're waiting on those two things, and then, once those are complete, then Dave can start the bid process to go out for bid. We also had a pre-construction meeting last week on Friday with the company that's doing our UV project at the sewer plant, they're starting to bring equipment in and get started. The document that I put up on your desk is the schedule, so we did find out that this project is gonna carry over into the next fiscal year, so I had budgeted all that money to be spent this fiscal year, so really, two-thirds will probably be paid out this fiscal year, and then the other third will be next fiscal year, so we'll have to adjust this budget, then I'll have to add about a hundred thousand to next year's budget to finish off this project. Those funds though, we've had set aside for quite a while, and they are there, it's not money I have to find, it's been sitting there. P&amp;Z met last week, we had a really good meeting, they hashed through the first draft of the mobile home ordinance, there's a few changes that we're gonna make in the next meeting, and maybe possibly two meetings, but they should have something to you guys in the next couple of months on that. We also started to take a look at future land use plan, talking about that, and also possible annexation into the city, so I'm working on all those things right now. Also, possibility of some development here in Lisbon, as well as LMI project that I've been working on, we have a hundred and four thousand dollars of LMI funds that can only be used for specific purposes to do with LMI housing or to provide low to moderate income housing, so we're working on a project with that to try to get some possibly four houses built here in Lisbon using those funds. Southeast Lynn, I've been working with them for the last three or four months, John, working on rehabbing the kitchen, since they've lost fundings, they have no funds available to do anything in the kitchen, it is our building, even though the agreement says they take care of the inside, we take care of the outside, if for some reason Southeast Lynn would not be around anymore, it's still our building, we wouldn't be able to get anybody else in there with the kitchen the way it is now. I have worked with local contractors here, thank you Eric Crowe for all your help on that, we've got cabinets picked out, ordered, they should be here the week of February fifth, Eric Crowe's company is gonna donate to installation of those cabinets, got granite or quartz countertops ordered to the top of those, Nicole was able to get a four thousand five hundred dollars grant from Greater Cedar Rapids Foundation to help pay for some of it, I'm taking a little bit of money out of my general fund that I use here because I don't anticipate using it this year, I think we repaired and corrected everything in this building that we need to, so using some of that money, and then, I've asked some local organizations, John was gonna help me with one, two, Whitetail's Unlimited is considering possibly Rotary and some other groups maybe having a fundraising to cover the rest of it, so in the next two or three months, we should have a brand-new kitchen at Southeast Lynn, so people can rent it for graduations, baby showers, wedding showers, have more events down there, so coming along well, I think that's...
So, when they rent that, who gets that money?
Southeast Lynn, it's part of their operating budget.
So, we're paying for the updates, for them to fix that?
We're paying for...
And then, when they get all the money?
Fifty dollars for four hours, so it's not a lot of money.
Well, I'm not saying that, but I mean, we're, you know, you spend ten thousand dollars in the kitchen, and then you, the city pays for it, and you move on.
We're only paying a proportion of it, we'll probably pay for a third of it here, and the rest will be paid for donations and the grant that Nicole was able to get.
And I think once it gets to where people can use it like that, it will be used a lot more than what it had to be.
And that's the way it was when it was developed, but it's just, it just, something happened, something happened.
It's a great asset to our community, and I just felt that I could sacrifice part of my budget to make that a nice, healthy place for people to go, and when people walk in that door, even though it's Southeast Lynn building, they think of Lisbon and they think of us, and it needs to look nice and present us in a nice way, because a lot of people come from out of town to rent that facility, and will come from out of town to rent that facility, so.
Well, not only that, but if it's that cheap to rent it, it is, I mean, you can't find a place to have a birthday party, you know, especially if you're in, you know, you could use the good lands in the park, it could be good weather, but if you have any chance of bad weather or anything like that, you're gonna be paying several hundred dollars to rent a place.
I just had a six-year-old birthday party, I'd rented fifty bucks.
Yeah, I would too, for sure.
Yeah, I will tell you that you've got a very good, very aggressive, progressive director down there, that's doing everything right, in my opinion, and I'm on board, she's really, really worked hard at the job, and you've got a pretty good board down there now, it's really trying to get a lot of things done and upgraded that have just been...
We won't add water, so if it's dry and it's creating a dust storm, we're not gonna do that. If we had the water, we'd take the chance of not getting in winter out of it from breaking on us. Sure y'all heard, we had a water main incident, which actually wasn't a water main incident. We had four service lines attached to the connection to the water main actually rusted and broke. So the main was intact. It was actually the service connections to...
Each of them south?
Yep, to the individual residences that went back. So when we have new developments, I know there's always been a question on why we gotta have engineering staff and the city staff there inspecting it. This is one of the reasons why.
Did they use the wrong equipment or something?
It wasn't the wrong equipment, but it also wasn't the best equipment for you. It was probably towards the cheaper end at the time it was installed. It's not even allowed in the town now since I've been here. So we also take different steps now too with the knowledge and the education we've got from the past and stuff failing, so.
So when those saddles come off of those mains, is that ours or is that...
Yeah, that's part of the, when the city took back from the care box to the main five years ago or... Yeah. When they took that back, this was part of the reason why is that council didn't feel as fair for the residents to be responsible for the street. And that's, you know, I don't know if you guys have been down there, we've got a three day hole in the street. We fixed three, thought we were good, and shut the hydrant off after flushing it. And before he could get one of them wrapped, the hole filled up with water from another one we had defused.
Where was it set?
South Street at the cul-de-sac there.
By Lumbax Old House?
Holy Williams.
Waters, yeah.
So with that being said, this spring, as long as we can make it to this spring, we're gonna take our back card over there and pothole the existing services we haven't replaced and verify if they were wrapped, and if they weren't wrapped, what kind of shape they're in. And if we deem they need to be fixed, it's a lot easier to do it.
So those were not properties that were taken care of in the water main project that we had over there a few years ago, right?
No, we just, we made the connection at Alexander.
Okay.
That's where we did it, so it went down that way. Which came out because we could actually draw it down and make it a decent working area.
That it?
Yep, that's it. It's done.
Okay, Connie, or no, well, yeah.
Ricky's already got his, so. Dave only had one thing to report tonight, so I told him I would take care of that for him, and if he could spend some time with his family tonight. He did get, wanted to update you guys on the sewer rehab project that, one that we got the grants and everything for. So currently, right now, they're doing an environmental review. That has to be done before they can release the funds to us. And also, we had to do a, what do they call it, a tribal notice. We had to send notice to four or five different tribes that are in this area for some reason. Some of the letters I sent went to Oklahoma. They have 30 days to respond or to comment on our project that we're doing. And we have about, we're just about close to the end of that 30 days. We haven't heard anything yet, so hopefully we'll be okay on that. And then we also have to have a seven day local comment period, which will start. So the hoops you have to jump through to get this $500,000 are amazing, but we'll take it. So we're waiting on those two things. And then, once those are complete, then Dave can start the bid process to go out for bid. We also had a pre-construction meeting last week on Friday with the company that's doing our UV project at the sewer plant. They're starting to bring equipment in and get started. The document that I put up on your desk is the schedule, so we did find out that this project is gonna carry over into the next fiscal year. So I had budgeted all that money to be spent this fiscal year, so really, two-thirds will probably be paid out this fiscal year, and then the other third will be next fiscal year. So we'll have to adjust this budget, and I'll have to add about $100,000 to next year's budget to finish off this project. Those funds, though, we've had set aside for quite a while, and they are there. It's not money I have to find, it's been sitting there. P&amp;Z met last week. We had a really good meeting. They hashed through the first draft of the mobile home ordinance. There's a few changes that we're gonna make in the next meeting, and maybe possibly two meetings, but they should have something to you guys in the next couple of months on that. We also started to take a look at future land use plan, talking about that, and also possible annexation into the city. So I'm working on all those things right now. Also, possibility of some development here in Lisbon, as well as LMI project that I've been working on. We have $104,000 of LMI funds that can only be used for specific purposes to do with LMI housing or to provide low to moderate income housing. So we're working on a project with that to try to get some, possibly four houses built here in Lisbon using those funds. Southeast Lynn, I've been working with them for the last three or four months, John. Working on rehabbing the kitchen. Since they've lost fundings, they have no funds available to do anything in the kitchen. It is our building, even though the agreement says they take care of the inside, we take care of the outside. If for some reason Southeast Lynn would not be around anymore, it's still our building, we wouldn't be able to get anybody else in there with the kitchen in the way it is now. I have worked with local contractors here. Thank you, Eric Crowe, for all your help on that. We've got cabinets picked out, ordered. They should be here the week of February 5th. Eric Crowe's company is gonna donate to installation of those cabinets. Got counter granite or quartz countertops ordered to the top of those. Nicole was able to get a $4,500 grant from Greater Cedar Rapids Foundation to help pay for some of it. I'm taking a little bit of money out of my general fund that I use here, because I don't anticipate using it this year. I think we've repaired and corrected everything in this building that we need to. So using some of that money, and then I've asked some local organizations, John was gonna help me with one, too. Whitetails Unlimited is considering possibly Rotary and some other groups maybe having a fundraising to cover the rest of it. So in the next two or three months, we should have a brand new kitchen at Southeast Lynn so people can rent it for graduations, baby showers, wedding showers, have more events down there. So coming along well, I think that's...
So when they rent that, who gets that money?
Southeast Lynn. It's part of their operating budget.
So we're paying for the updates for them to fix that?
We're paying for it.
And then when they get all the money?
$50 for four hours, so it's not a lot.
Well, I'm not saying that, but I mean, you know, you spend $10,000 in the kitchen, and then you, the city pays for it, and you leave all the money.
We're only paying a portion of it. We'll probably pay for a third of it here, and the rest will be paid for donations and the grant that Nicole was able to get.
And I think once it gets to where people can use it like that, it will be used a lot more than what it has been.
And that's the way it was when it was developed.
Right.
But it's just, it just, something happened, and something happened.
It's a great asset to our community, and I just felt that I could sacrifice part of my budget to make that a nice, healthy place for people to go. When people walk in that door, even though it's Southeast Lynn building, they think of Lisbon and they think of us, and it needs to look nice and present us in a nice way. Because a lot of people come from out of town to rent that facility, and will come from out of town to rent that facility.
Well, not only that, but if it's that cheap to rent it, it is, I mean, you can't find a place to have a birthday party or anything, you know, especially if you're in, you know, you could use the pavilions and park, it could be good weather. But if you have any chance of bad weather or anything like that, you're gonna be paying several hundred dollars to rent a place.
I just had a six-year-old birthday party, I'd rent it for $50.
Yeah, I would too. For sure.
Yeah, I will tell you that you've got a very good, very aggressive, progressive director down there that's doing everything right, in my opinion, and I'm on board. She's really, really worked hard at the job. You've got a pretty good board down there now that's really trying to get a lot of things done and upgraded that have just been let sit for a long time.
Good things happening in Lisbon.
They sold over $1,000 for the pies.
They might have to sell a thousand more.
Oh, yeah.
Could you handle the kitchen?
I would like cherry pies all.
I'm not on the pipe before.
Well, you bring it up to the first house. Anything else?
Nope, that's all I have.
The only thing I have is tomorrow that ABCM is going to have one year celebration on their new building out there, and they're having soup and sandwiches from 11 to 1:30, is that counting?
11 and 1:30, yep.
Yeah, and that kind of, and anybody that wants to. I had soup out, I had sandwiches. All the guy.
I'm spending a year already.
Okay, Stephanie, you get to be first.
Okay. So I just had a couple of things. First of all, I did, you know, Travis brought up the water main break, or what they thought was a water main break. We left to go to town that morning, you know, like 10 o'clock in the morning, they were over there. We went out to some, my sister's house, whatever, come out one night, came on at 11 o'clock at night, they were still there. I believe they were out for like 18 hours, our public works or maintenance guys, working on that on a Saturday. And I think that, you know, they deserve some credit for that, because I don't think that people realize, like, I know, you know, you hear people, "I saw the truck here, I saw the truck there," but you don't always hear or see this kind of stuff. The same with the police department, fire department, whatever. You don't always see this other stuff, that they're taking time away from their family when they're supposed to have their time off to do this kind of stuff. And so I thank you guys for that. And then the other thing I would mention is that on February 6th, they are going to have the bond vote for the school. Whether you're voting for it or against it, whatever, but I think they're having a meeting on the 24th, another informational meeting where you can go out and get information. I've not been to one of those meetings. I will tell you why, I'm following them on Facebook. And I was reading some articles the other day, and there is a lot of things that I don't think, or at least I didn't think about, and one of those was, you know, they were talking about, and we know this, we know that you're as strong as your community and your school and all of that, and we all know that. But, you know, my kids are just about out of there, so my kids wouldn't be using a trap or be benefiting from any of the things that are going to be in that program. But there will come a time and point where I will want to sell my house potentially and not live in Lisbon anymore. And when that comes, my house is gonna be worth a lot more if we do have a strong school that's competitive with schools in our area, and they can compete for the young families that are moving this direction. And so I think that that's worth thinking about too when you're doing this vote, because I know nobody wants to spend any more money, but, and you may not have somebody who's gonna benefit from the things, but you may benefit indirectly and don't realize it. I obviously have great nieces and nephews that probably could benefit from some of the things that they're doing, but for a couple hundred dollars a year, I think it's worth investing in not only our community, but in our young people. Again, I think they're so important to our community, and I think getting them involved and putting our faith in them and investing in them only helps us all in the end. So that's nice to feel on that. And it takes a 60% majority for that to pass, so it's really, really, really important that you and as many people as you can get out there, go vote.
And just to add on to that, they're having satellite voting at the school on the 25th, isn't that a wrestling meet night?
I think there's another one, too.
Oh, really?
And I can't remember what the date is, does anybody know? There were two, maybe it was, yeah, there was two different opportunities that you had to vote ahead of time. Maybe it was just to go to the auditorium or anything.
Elections are set, so we open at 7 o'clock in the morning.
And go till 8 o'clock? And it's here?
And it's here, and you need identification.
Yeah, as of January 1st, you have to have either your government-issued driver's license or some type of government-issued ID. So please, please, please vote.
Okay, Nate, you get to be next.
I didn't really have anything, but I'm very pleased that Stephanie propped up the city work, Public Works Department. That's, I heard about the water main break, one of the neighbors in that area wanted their daughter to come over and use our shower, and just now we're leaving, and we're like, "Go ahead and do it," but they never did. But, no, that's great that you guys can put forth the time, even though it's time off, to take care of that. And I have been to the two, or to two of the informational meetings that have been held for the school. And they've got some great ideas, and they've gotten a lot of input from members of the community, so this isn't just a small core group that's decided how this money's gonna be spent. This has been, had a lot of input from, you know, a variety of backgrounds. And the existing school, at the very least, needs some upgrades, let alone, you know, the, what some people have called luxury items, like a trap or an auditorium. Stephanie's right, you know, without those things, you know, we're gonna stay a little bit behind the other communities. And so, I know I support those things, and I also iterate that people need to get out and vote, because it is a 60% majority.
I will say too, Nate, you probably know more than me because you've been in means, but I believe you have to say yes to all three items on the ballot for it to pass.
Yes.
Are there three or there are two?
Three. I believe that there are three, and you have to vote yes for all three of them. You cannot vote yes for two and not one. You have to vote yes for all three of them in order for the bond to pass as a whole.
No. You can vote for, you can vote for the third one.
If you don't vote for the third one, you vote for the first two.
The tax rate stays as it is now?
They get some, what they just, not the one they wanna do.
The trap, okay.
Yeah, the first part of the vote is like, I think about $5.
$4.4 or something like that.
And then the second part, if it's approved, they can tax higher if they vote to nine. Right, and that nine would include the extra things like a trap and an auditorium. The five would be for maintaining the tax rate basically right as it is, which would give them the opportunity to upgrade things within the existing structure of the school, such as the old gym, the science wing, some high school rooms. That's all.
That's good to know. Okay, Nate, or Travis?
So I'll add to that, since it's fresh in everybody's mind. We have to remember that we do have a bypass going through in the next two years, and with that bypass will come great growth. And if we are not prepared for that, either with our city or our school, then the growth that we want will become a hardship on us rather than us welcoming that growth. So I think that it's important to think about the future and give people a reason to come to Lisbon, and with those two, you know, two things that they're asking for, the auditorium and the track, is definitely something that will help bring people to, and hopefully to stay for a very long time. So yes, get out and vote, and let's make this happen. The other thing I wanted to ask about was, we've talked a couple of times about trying to take some of the land that we purchased out of the hole that's on it right now.
Sports company?
Yeah. And I wondered if we could get some figures on that, because we might wanna start thinking about that for possibly spring soccer, and if we can, you know, we want to look at, we might wanna start getting some plans ready for putting in driveways and things like that.
I have numbers. I can give them, present them to you guys Wednesday at the Westport shop.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that we were keeping that on the plate. That's all I have.
John?
Well, I'll second all comments about the school and the staff and everything that are great. I was at both those meetings for the school, too. They did an outstanding job, and the people I've talked to that were at the meeting are convinced that it's a good deal. The CPR class is gonna be this Saturday, the 27th, at the ambulance service, at the ambulance service and the local Rotary that are sponsoring that in the morning. And then Stop the Bleeds is a class that's gonna be in the afternoon. They have a limit of around 40 people, and I think they're at least 10 pulled up by now. So if you're interested, it'd be good to get your name on the list, or take your chances to just stop over there. I think it's 9 o'clock on Saturday morning, 1 o'clock for the Stop the Bleeds. And then citizens asked me this evening about the South Washington spot that was dug up. We're still waiting for warmer weather to probably fix that.
Yep, the contract states they have until June to finish it, so.
Oh, okay.
It will be this spring.
You said you were starting with the UV thing. What have we going with flash flood and flood year now, will that all be protected?
We put, so the UV is submersible, and it's gonna be underwater at all time. The control panels are above what they say is 100-year flood plain, and it might even be 500-year, but they are submersible for up to, I forget like how many hours. So basically, the big thing's gonna be is getting that off to it, and I don't think we'll have any problems. But we've done, we've done everything we could to ensure that if that does happen again, it's not gonna be a huge cost.
I agree with you on talking about school. Like Stephanie said Thursday, or the mayor said Thursday they will have satellite voting over at the school for it. There should be 500 people there for Lisbon Mount Moscow meeting anyway, so hopefully they'll vote in.
Connie, just 'cause it's so new, but their siren today was malfunction.
It was a malfunction.
And somebody's coming to look at it. And if that were, if that stuff, kind of thing happens, is there a place that people can go, is it on the website? Do you guys put it on Facebook? What do you, how do we?
We did, but we did that one of once.
Unfortunately, the problem we had today was our phones were ringing so fast that every time I would pick it up to try to call Brandon, I finally had to go to cell phone. Christina and I for probably 20 minutes straight, we couldn't even pick up the phone to make a phone call, so that was the problem today. But in any other case, so we would post it on our Facebook page and the website.
And so the city of Lisbon has a Facebook page, I know Park and Rec has a Facebook page, and you guys kind of pretty much share everything through those two pages. If it happens in the city, you share it on the Park and Rec, if it, yeah.
I should link together, yeah.
And do we ever update anything on the website, or is that just basically an informational site? We don't like make daily updates or?
No, we don't. We update when activities are coming or if we need to send messages. And I know that Lisbon Inc. has been working on our, we have two websites right now, and it's kind of a little confusing, but one of them is basically just for governmental stuff, like your council meetings and ordinance and that kind of stuff. And then we have the other one that has more activities, and we haven't updated that one as much as we'd like to. It's just, you know, Christina runs out of time, or there's just not that many activities going on that we're aware of, so Lisbon Inc. has been working on that one for us to see what they can do to make it up.
Are we gonna put those two sites together at some point?
I would, they wanted to do that, Lisbon Inc. wanted to do it, but unfortunately, the government one, we don't want anybody else touching but us, because we, that's got the government on. And every time we update our .gov website, we have to go through .gov and it costs us money to do it, or the other one, Christina can go in there and update and do whatever she needs to do. So like I said, Lisbon Inc.'s been working on that right now, and I went and met with them a month or so ago, and they've got some really good ideas, but they would have preferred to combine them together too, but, so I guess it's something that we can put on the agenda and talk to see what, how we wanna go in the future of those websites, but.
I mean, we're not really, I guess, marketing people or whatever with our websites, but it's always a bad idea to have two websites, because they flipper each other.
But maybe we need to do that.
What?
Do some marketing or something?
Well, you wouldn't do it with two websites, for sure, because that would cause a problem.
Well, some things can't be on the government website, right? That can be on the other website.
Yeah.
Wednesday we have budget meeting, who do we have? Anybody else?
We have sewer, water, road use, garbage, and general.
Give it up an hour? So we can go on that school mortgage thing?
Or should we try, oh, is it too late to move it up? Can everybody be here?
I could be close to 24 hours. We could move it up to 5:30 if you guys can make it.
I can't make it.
You can't make it? At all, or just at 5:30?
I can't make it at 5:30.
Oh.
I can do 6, but I can't do 5:30. That's just kind of two things.
I really don't, we're probably not gonna do garbage, because I'm waiting to, for the solid waste committee to meet, so we might do garbage a little bit later, so it'll be, Travis and I have already met in Wentworth, and we really don't have too many changes, so I think we can just move it along.
Did you vote for bids for garbage? What did you decide on that?
We, I'm still working with Jonathan and refuse right now. So I met with Steve twice, and that's why I wanna meet with the solid waste committee to get their input, and we're trying to do that this week. So I don't think we're gonna be ready to approve or for you guys to do the garbage budget yet, so we might wait and do that at the next regular council meeting.
Okay, remember all those nights when we were only here for 10 minutes? Well, we're changing. Any more business? Meeting adjourned.